Good evening.
Hi Gary!
Hi, I'm Pauline. Greetings. There's some seats down the back for Tragic who are standing at the moment. Come out up the front, Pauline, candidates need to be seen up the front. Go on.
Seen and on here.
You don't need to convince me, I've already voted for you, so come on. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Greetings and thank you for coming today. One of the issues that's been debated, by the way, I just want to check. Erin, have you turned the camera on?
Yes Gary.
Anthony?
Button's pushed.
Will give you advice on how to keep it out of focus?
It's your fault, the moment Gary, it's just what you're finishing.
Yeah, that's right.
Hang on, that's better.
He's got his hand over it, that's great. Now you're recording me beautifully. One of the things that, my observation in politics is that often when something is contentious and people will come out against something, when it's successful, it's got a lot of owners. And I suspect that's what is going to happen with cycleways. And, just in case she wanted to slip in quietly, the mayor has just walked in the back row. Bloody long time since I saw her on the bike, but we won't go.
She's bound to have one now.
She's bound to have one now, yeah. Yeah, so, one of the things that, you know, if you think back to the photographs of the 50s and there were thousands of bikes outside an event, because that was Christchurch or the, two traffic lights in Christchurch had a whole stack of cycles out in the front of it. I used to often look at the pictures and think, how the hell do people find their bike? At the end of it, probably, probably the key thing would be to arrive with one bike and leave with a better one. But, so, but Sarah and Mike have led the campaign at the council and have been really rubbish because of it. And it's really easy to actually focus in on a person and make them look bad politically. And I just think we need to say thank you to these two in particular and the staff. And Pauline chaired the committee that actually got it through. And it's really important that, particularly during an election campaign when you feel lonely and you've got the biggest job interview in town, it's really important that we actually acknowledge the people and the staff who worked really hard. Axel was one of the staff members who put this through and fought for years on it. Now, we need to hear about these, I think that first picture's bullshit. Got that from Germany or somewhere like that. Axel won it, that was Axel's relatives greeting him when he went home. You didn't know you had so many relatives, did you Axel? They're all Catholics.
A club from a village. Relating to everyone.
Yeah, they're all Catholics. Alright. So, who's speaking, Sarah or Mike or both?
That would be both.
Okay. Sarah?
Okay.
I'll put the mic down.
Kina munga, kina waka, kina tata, tanga tana itere, omihe kia koto, tena koto. So, I am Sarah Templeton and that is not photoshopped, that's the Templeton Tunnel just a couple of years ago. And they had an open day for the anniversary. And in theory, I think it was only supposed to be open for a couple of hours, but there were so many people wanting to bike, walk and scoot through, that it was absolutely chock and I think the totals were somewhere near fifteen, twenty...
Can't hear you Sarah.
Fifteen or twenty thousand, is there a volume somewhere?
No, you just have to speak into the microphone.
Really, okay, really close. So it was too lovely then, it's really unusual. So... Right, so, quick intro on me, so I found myself six years ago chairing a community board and five years ago we were making recommendations on one of the major cycle routes that was going to go through Limwood. And I was chairing the board and I asked around the table, I said, "Right, so as we're going through this, who's biked the route?" And out of the, nine of us around the table at that stage, no, seven? Seven of us around the table at that stage, no one had biked the route and yet we were being asked to make recommendations on it. And I thought that that wasn't good enough, people were saying, "Oh no, but I've driven it", or "I've walked it, I know the area really well", but biking is quite a different experience and at that point, I didn't own one. So I did a bit of research, I was unfit, a busy mum with three kids doing a part-time job chairing the board and I bought myself an e-bike. And it's out the front currently, it's nearly five years old now and I just haven't looked back. It's given me a huge amount of fitness and confidence. I now own three bikes, including a nice sort of mint green vintage style wicker basket on the front and now, something I thought I'd never do, a proper road bike. So it can go up on the hills and things as well. And I'm really enjoying biking, I'm fitter and healthier than I've been in decades and in January, I sold my car. I don't know how many cars I've done Gary, I'm sorry, my odometer broke. I've ordered another one, but I was up to seven thousand at the beginning of the year and that was before I sold my car, so, yeah, but I've just ordered another one.
Mike?
No, another odometer.
Kola kote, for those that don't know me, I'm Mike Davison, first term councillor. A little bit similar to Sarah, I still got introduced to cycleways when I was the chair of the Shirley Papadoue Community Board and we were doing the Papadoue parallel. Previous to that, I was, had been a recreational cyclist, so I did quite a bit of cycling but not commuting. So, I guess once I got introduced to actually, you know, using a bike to commute to work, I was sort of sold in. For me, I'm actually a confident cyclist, but this wasn't about me, this was about a lot of other people that weren't so confident. I saw the benefits that it could bring. So once I got elected to council, once again, I sold Leanne's BMW and... And just have biked everywhere since and hardly ever use the family car. But we're just two people, for some reason we get singled out a lot. Two people on council, we get singled out a lot in the press write-ups. But see, there's a big team there and it takes the majority of council to put these cycleways through, to agree to the amount of money and what's going to be done and then that is delegated down to ITU, the Infrastructure Transport Environment Committee. So I like to acknowledge councillor Pauline Coliff for the great work she's done on that committee and obviously, Emily Anne. You know, this is a team, team effort and we're actually achieving quite a lot. And it's been done in a small space. But yeah, I love cycling, but I just try and actually create better infrastructure for actually everybody else, because I know there's a lot of people that actually want to get into cycling.
And the other thing as we start, is I'm super aware that we're in a room with a whole pile of people who actually do the real stuff and the numbers and actual infrastructure for a living and are experts. So excuse us for any mistakes. So Christchurch has a very, very proud history in cycling. We used to be known as cyclopolis, so the cycling capital of the southern hemisphere. So we've got the suffragists and bikes played a key part. There's an entire section of Tiara, the national digital sort of archives and things like that, on bikes and suffrage. And you think about those women going around petition after petition, because there were three petitions, door to door and event to event on their bicycles, on unsealed Christchurch roads on bikes with no suspension. And they did a lot of biking and that was a key part of getting us to vote. The cycling factory there is the Zelandia Cycling Works, which was the largest cycle factory in Australasia in the 1890s. After that, of course, we had healing in Christchurch as well, in Bromley and so we used to build a lot of bikes in Christchurch too. One Gary was talking about earlier, photos of people biking through the CBD in the 40s and then we've got some 1954, some girls from Limwood High School biking to school in their gear. This is my experience of biking to school, this is 1986 at Burnside High School. That's a fourth former, called, so if anyone knows here, let them know it's there, Rebecca Porton. So, that was in there and you'll notice by the uniform, that's a winter photo. So that is July the 30th, 1986. That's the way it was and so that's even in the 80s, there was a lot of people biking and biking to school, so, pretty cool.
Did she find her bike?
I'm assuming she found her bike, but the caption of the photo actually was, "Fourth former Rebecca Porton trying to find her bike", it might just be that everyone else found theirs and hers was the last one left. It was always easier if you went in a bit later, when you were looking for it at the end of the day. But I don't think any of the bikes there are particularly locked either, because the sheds themselves are locked with the big wire cages and things there, which is great. So, got some stats here and thanks to Chrissie who some time ago lent me her big stack of Christchurch cycling history, kind of the old city council documents and things to go through, which was fascinating. And there's a really cool document, it's the 1979 Cycling in Christchurch document. And as part of that, they did all the bike shed counts and I'll just go through a couple of these. So in 1979, 75% of students that went to Burnside High School biked and 19% walked. Kashmir, it was 60% biking, 24% walking. Boys High, 67% biking, 15% walking. Girls High, 64% biking, 10% walking and quite a lot fast. And Papadoue High was 73% with 16% walking. So that was huge numbers of students biking to school in the late 70s. By 2016, Burnside was at 9%. Kashmir had gone from 60 to 13. Boys High, 67 down to 19, that's the highest of the schools stayed up. Girls High went from 64% to 5%. Papadoue went from 73 to 9. Ricketon was at 4%, Marahhow at 3% and Avonside Girls at 2% biking to school. So a huge drop-off. And there's a document that Gary, we're familiar with, the 2004 Cycling Strategy, Christchurch City Council, but it's cherry mug at the front of it. And some of the stats there, so the first one is the commuting graph that looks at the stats sort of over time and because it was quite a steep decline for a while from the 60s and then it tapered off and that's actually because it was declining quite a lot, the council and a whole pile of people within it started working on trying to improve cycling infrastructure. Mostly that was cycle lanes painted on the road or some off-street stuff, but people were deliberately starting to think about how they might stop the decline in cycling. The, I don't have it much earlier for the school students, this is the only graph that was in there, but between 1998 and 2003, bike shed cycle counts indicated a decline from 24% to 18%, so 2003. And then we've got the 2016 numbers that I just read out, so really low by then. So big, steep drop-off. And there's a range of factors involved, so the rise in cars, people, and not just the sheer number of them, but people valued them, they were a status symbol. If you drove somewhere, it was valued more. Bikes became more of a loser kind of thing to do. We had busier lives, we often had two working parents, households had two cars, you were, you know, getting kids to and from school, those kind of things. The cycling infrastructure wasn't particularly good and the helmet law came in in 94 and I was one of those students, I think at university at the time, who, you know, big hair post in the 80s and then still in the 90s and didn't want to wear a helmet. And I stopped biking when the helmet law came in. The commuter stuff stabilized, but the school kid stuff kept declining and that was a real issue and it still has. So, why is cycling infrastructure so important? We know, because Christchurch has had a proud history, we know that it's not something that people say it is, okay? So we know that people aren't biking because it's too cold or it's too dark, those kind of things. Christchurch, for example, is warmer, drier, lighter than both Amsterdam and Copenhagen on average, year-round. And so those kind of things go out the window, plus people used to do it here anyway. You know, there's the school photo from July. And so, safety is a key thing and it's perceived safety as well as real safety, because cycling's actually, you know, it's safer than playing rugby and more people get injured in cars, all of those kind of things. But the key reason, and I've done the travel survey stuff as a parent rep actually before I was elected, the key reason that kids don't bike to school is because their parents don't think it's safe, not because the kids don't want to. I mean, my kids have done the Weekbit's triathlon the last few years and there's 3,000 bikes there, all locked up in this cage and it's, you know, it's eight to 15-year-olds, mostly eight to 12-year-olds, only a few of the older ones, who love biking. And when I talk to the parents, these kids love biking, they do some recreation biking when their parents take them somewhere, but for the most part, they don't bike to school. And the parents say that's because it's not safe. And sometimes people say that there's not an option, there's cycleways in some places, there aren't in others. Economic benefits are huge when it comes to cycling infrastructure. Oh, hang on, this is the photo here of the safety stuff. These kids here, they stopped at the lights after I'd taken the photo and they were heading off to Hagley and their parents wouldn't let them bike to school until the cycle lane was added to Sardes Street. And they're really starting to be able to use it. So it's pretty cool. Economic benefits, there's a range of things here, both for individuals as well as for the city as a whole. Individually, cycling is the cheapest, most efficient way of getting somewhere apart from walking, gets you a bit further than walking, a bit faster. So having sold my car, we've saved heaps of money at home and even though I've paid for a few Yugo share rides, a couple of taxi rides and lots of bus fares, we still saved heaps of money this year through not owning a car, which has been great. But for a city, you think about the Litchfield Street Car Parking Building, $32 million. We're earthquake rebuilt, the government won't subsidize us for car parking, funnily enough. But the $32 million it provides us with 800 car parks in the central city. We've got around 10,000 more people going to be working in the CBD in the next few years. And so to house all of those cars, if people drove in with 83% single vehicle use occupancy, we would need another, what, eight or 10 car parking buildings to hold them all. And we don't have the land or the money to be able to do that, okay? So it makes a lot of sense if you can build infrastructure that gets people into town, whether that's public transport or cycling, without their cars. Like building infrastructure that allows people to leave their cars at home for that trip, okay? So it's not every trip that you do, you don't have to sell your car, but if we give people an option, it means that they can come into town much more easily and without paying for parking and all those kind of things, it's better for us as a city if you don't have to build lots of car parking buildings. We all know the health benefits of biking, fitter, healthier. Workers say they're more productive, so 73% of people who bike to work say they're more productive at work. The range of things just come out in the latest Transport for London study, which has been really good. And of course, climate change. And 53% of our city's emissions come from transport and switching people away from their single occupancy vehicles into other modes, sustainable modes like bikes, is going to help us with that. Just reading something today which said that an e-bike, and yes, there is some energy and cost involved and carbon involved in making an e-bike, but it only takes one year of using your e-bike instead of a car before that is offset, which is really important. And e-bikes are changing the way people are travelling all over the world. They outsell EVs 300 to 1 internationally. Over to you.
Excellent, I would assume a lot of you will know about what I'm going to talk about now, but we'll go over it. The major cycleway routes is 13 connected cycleways across the city. Started in 2013, was actually approved under the, in Bob Parker's council and the expected delivery of this is 2028. It has had some delays and a few increases in costs with the current costs sitting around $256 million. That's not all out of rates though, there's quite heavy subsidies from central government. It's 100 kilometres of cycling infrastructure. So where are we at? So currently, there's been 40 kilometres of the 100Ks completed. So the cycleway's completed is the little river, the Papadoue parallel and the Unicycle and potentially, if there's any staff here, maybe I'll tell me whether the Quarryman Trail's been fully completed yet? Has? Yes, so there's four now completely done. Unfortunately, we're not allowed to celebrate it because there's an election happening, which is a shame. And we've also got another couple that obviously had significant progress and that's been the Heathcote Express and the Rapunui Shagrock. And there's just a few more sections on them to go before they're fully done. And the Northern Line and I guess we're having conversations with Kiwi Row so we can get that one finished, it's actually quite a popular one, it's been there for a long time, large sections of that are heavily, heavily used. And just recently at council, we obviously approved the South Express, which is a cycleway that extends from Templeton to the CBD and eventually, South District will also connect into it, so it'll be from Rolleston. And actually, it's not just for people that want to bike from Templeton to the CBD, it's for anyone that lives along the route and may just want to bike a small section. And that actual route passes nine schools. So the ability to actually provide safer infrastructure for schoolchildren is just a massive opportunity for the city. Obviously, there's also a number of other cycleways that are in various stages right at the beginning of the process, so there's still a lot of work to be done. So obviously, we do get a bit of pushback on the, on the cycleways and we do get used to it, but I think this election's been slightly different than the last one and this has been a little bit more ramped up with various candidates obviously wanting the cycleways to be cut, delayed, making comments that there's too many cycleways, they're not priority, that there's too much money being spent on them and no one, no one uses them. And obviously, being an election and certain candidates talk about this, it gets lots of media attention. So I guess it's important to go over some of those points that have been raised. And one of the ones that's always used is the cost of the cycleway. And it's a shame that they only ever fixate on the $250 million total price tag for the whole program. You know, we do a lot of road in projects and we never look at what the cost of that is over a 15-year period, we just focus on the actual road itself. And one of the things with the cycleways, obviously it's heavily subsidized by central government. It's a minimum of 51% under the national government, we're actually getting up to 65%. With the Labour government, we were going to be getting 75%, but unfortunately, some bigger road in projects in the North Island took all the money and so NZTA gave us just the 51%. But hopefully, if the government gets re-elected, then we may be able to get back up to that 75%. With the build of the cycleway, 30% of that cost actually directly benefits other commuters as well as cycleways, so we're doing shared paths, intersection upgrades. So there's more than just the actual cycling infrastructure. Like I said, it's a 15-year program and it's sort of worked out. If the cost was spread evenly over that 15 years and you were trying to take it off rates to save some money, the actual savings would be around 0.17, you know, impact on, on the rates. So I've had a few people obviously discuss that with me and say, "Well, it's not spread evenly", that's correct, obviously at the start, you know, there wasn't a huge spend. So I had a look at the next three years, because there has been talk of just cutting them straight away to save, save that money on rates. So year one, for the next following three years, would save that 0.17%. Year two, 0.24%. Year three, 0.24%. So at the most, you're going to save a quarter percent on rates if you cut the cycleway, delayed the cycleway program. And if you're going to delay it, actually the cost of building is going to be even more when you finally start to rebuild them again. So, I guess it's just one of the things that actually, the impact on rates is not as big as people make it to be. So no one uses them or wants them. There was actually a really good piece in the press just recently that obviously showed that people are using the cycleways. Sarah spoke about the decline in numbers on cycleways. With the Unicycle, which is absolutely fantastic cycleway, what we've seen at both Boys High and Girls High over the last two years is actually a significant increase in schoolchildren biking to school. Boys High have seen a 7% increase in two years and Girls High have seen an 11% increase in two years of children, schoolkids biking to school. So it is showing that actually the cycleways are working. One of the other things we see is a lot of positive consultations. I do not believe there's actually been a consultation on a cycleway where the opposition has outweighed the support of cycleways. And in the recent LTP, the cycleways, the amount of submissions received on cycleways was in the top, top five. And actually, cycleways receive the most supportive submissions than any other thing in the council LTP. So it just shows actually, cycleways are popular with people. Unfortunately, a lot of the media don't always like to say the good news stories about, about cycleways, which is a shame. So a lot of you are probably aware that obviously we have a lot of counters. You guys are great. We obviously have a lot of cycleway counters now, which is doing, collecting a lot of data, which is, which is great to have. And what we've seen is that 20% increase over a year of people using the cycleways and that was taken from over seven cycleways entering into the CBD from 26 different locations. And what we're seeing is through the monthly stats, there's actually more people detected on those cycleways over this winter than there was last summer. So we're having more people now biking in winter than we did in summer on the cycleways. Also in August this year, we hit 300,000 detections, which is the first time it's actually had that many detections on those counters. And so things are actually working. So obviously, we're also hearing a lot of comments around the fact that this is not a priority, we should be actually focusing on, on roads. So it's quite interesting when you actually start looking at the stats for what we are doing. So cycleways built over the last three years, we did 30 kilometres. Roads resurfaced over the last three years, we did 153 kilometres and footpaths resurfaced over the last three years, we did 78Ks. So when we look forward over the next three years, it's quite interesting, we're only going to be doing 25.5 kilometres of cycleways. At the same time in those three-year period, we're going to be actually resurfacing 225 kilometres of roads and 95 kilometres of footpaths. So we're actually planned to do more road resurfacing and footpath resurfacing in the next three years than we'd have done in the last three years. So although some people say that the council aren't focused on actually repairing the roads, we have shown by the numbers and what we're doing, what we've planned to do, that actually we are focused on also repairing, repairing the roads. And what we're trying to do is actually provide better transport options for everyone. So whether you bike a bus or drive a car, we're trying to actually create a better environment for you to do that. We've also heard quite a bit about the proliferation of cycleways and how there's so many of them that are everywhere. So like I said, we've only built 40 kilometres of cycleways. Christchurch City District has a transport network of over 3,000 kilometres of roads. So current percentage, we've got about 3.3% of our, of our roads that actually have these new cycleways on it. When built, it's going to be up to 100Ks. You know, we're looking around less than 5% of actual road and we'll have the cycleway on it. I really do not think that is too many cycleways on our roads. Back to you.
Right. The Bike Clash. Yeah, Bike Clash has been really interesting. It has, I've got to say, toned down a little bit, even with the elections, the personal stuff quite so much. But for a couple of years in there, the Bike Clash in Christchurch was pretty significant. Every newspaper article, every time we had a consultation seemed to be about the overwhelmingly destructive cycleways. Whether that was the fact that the cycleways had gone in and all of a sudden people were putting their wheelie bins in them, or things like that. One month, we had three negative articles about cycleways over the month period. In the same month, Christchurch won Top Cycling City 2017 and opened the Papanui Parallel, and that wasn't printed in the paper. That same month, but there were three negative articles at the same time. So the media love controversy. That has toned down, I have to say. That has significantly changed over probably the last eight, nine months. And it has been noticeable. They're reporting what other people are saying, but not quite making it as sensational and negative as they used to. And as we saw on Saturday, and the star of the front page is just sitting back there, Charlotte. Give her a hand, everyone! You know, they're printing good news stories now too, which is fantastic. But yeah, the attacks do get personal. And you have to remember that politicians are people too. We're not other. We happen to be residents of the city who have, for whatever reason, put their hands up and said, "Actually, I'll help with some of the decision-making in the city because you need people to do that." And people make decisions based on a range of different things. And when you get constant negative attacks, personal attacks, and they're often online, it's not particularly nice and it is trying over time. So here's some of the comments that we've had. "I think Sarah Templeton needs a reality check." This was based on a news talk ZB post, which said that, "Oh, yeah, Sarah Templeton wants a 21st century sustainable city," or something like that. Something really controversial. "I think Sarah will not be voted back in at the council." "Back in, as the council needs to be thinking about more than just bikes." "I think Councilor Sarah Templeton is a complete fucking moron." I love the way that that one there is this like 80-year-old woman, Kelly Monk. Though when you go onto the profile, clearly it's fake. But, kind of be on those, Kelly, give her a hug for me. And then Mike's had some ones on it. Can you read those up there? "What planet is this Davidson fellow living on?" I have this Davidson fellow. "The multi-millions of dollars wasted, incredibly lengthy and destructive interruption to businesses, the mayhem with construction and traffic, and all for what? A small handful of lycra-clad cyclists. His own personal agenda pushing the barrow for his own benefit. He's a cycle Nazi." So, yeah, it's not particularly nice. And so, there's not much you can do to respond to that. I mean, I do spend way too much time putting facts online. I don't know that anyone ever reads them. But the one thing I did do when I read Kelly Monk's comment was I changed my profile picture. Scooter's always been my favourite. Yeah. But yeah, that's all you can do. So that was my profile picture for two weeks. And I think currently is my Strava one still. So, yeah. And back over to you.
One muscle to another. Yeah, look, I think it's really important now as we move forward is how we keep the cycleways on track. Because we have seen obviously that they have been pushed out quite far. And there was good reasons why we did that. Obviously, we did have to increase the budget when, I guess, some of the unknowns were known. We did push it out with the hope of bringing them forward once we got the 75% from NZTA, and obviously that fell away, so they've still stuck out at 2028. Hopefully, at some stage, if we do get that funding up, there may be the opportunity. But actually, helping it keep on track is what you guys are all about. And it's advocating to council. And when you advocate, telling the stories is really important. Like Sarah said, we're people and stories do work. We did have this, well, when she came to council with her baby, and she was telling some really good story about the cycleways and the benefit of cycleways. And although I think we've got a percentage of councillors that I guess think with the head, we've got a percentage also that think with the heart. And actually creates a really good balance around the council table. So while some people will come in and talk about facts and figures, other people will come in and actually talk about their life and how cycleways are affecting them. And actually, that really does help. And so, yeah, be public in your support. We do hear so many negative comments, and they seem very public about the negative aspects of cycling. It's actually really good to hear the positive things. And I think potentially that a lot of the positive comments have disappeared a little bit because I guess of that hate they get back whenever they do a positive comment. They seem to have a lot more hate come at them. But it's just stay in staunch and be public with that support. Submit on our consultations. I think we've found what happens, if people like the concept of a project, sometimes they do not submit compared to when they hate the project. Then they're more likely to submit and be more vocal. So if you see something, you think, "Actually, that's really good, I like that", submit as well and let us know. And obviously, most importantly, vote. I hope everyone here has already voted. But obviously, if we're not elected, then we can't advocate on your behalf to actually get these cycleways completed. I have a feeling that might be it. It is? Questions?
Right. Questions?
Easy one. Does the camera unfocus?
No. Yes. It's an easy question because Sarah's already answered it online. But you... The number, the kilometres of roadways that have been re-sealed over the next couple of years are a lot higher than they previously were. Can you explain why?
Because we listen. That's unusual for politicians.
It's a mix. So actually, one of the reasons that we're actually managing to do more is because the roads that have been prioritised initially for being resurfaced tend to be the roads with the higher usage and the higher criticality. So they tend to be the more arterial and collector roads. And they're mostly done in Ashvelt, which is heaps more expensive. So as we move into more of the local roads and the chips here, we can do many more kilometres for the same amount of money.
As one of the meral candidates that's fielded a number of these questions around the cost and burdens of perceived view of cycleways, certainly there's been a lack of advocacy from many of the candidates on what the benefits that are. So I think, you know, certainly the candidates could be well informed about that as well. But I'm a wee bit surprised, as being a smart city clever people candidate, we haven't had some joined-up thinking around BikeToba and the role of the app that's being conceived. Have you got any familiarity with that, Mike? And how's that going?
I've got two stamps.
Yep. I was at the opening. I'm pleased to have been able to support it.
Yeah, look, council has helped fund BikeToba. It's actually a really important event. It's really good. Personally, at the moment, I'm a little bit focused on my campaign to actually get out there. So hopefully, from Saturday, I can actually get out there and start collecting some stamps. And I guess we've got to be a little bit careful at the moment to separate us being candidates and actually what the council are doing at the moment.
I'm hoping I was able to sort of spin that in so that anybody just googles the app BikeToba.
Yeah, yeah. It's a fantastic thing. And it's got a bit more digital this time, so it's not a paper passport, it's a digital one. So I'm looking forward to getting out on my bike a bit more. Instead of delivering flyers, actually biking around the streets.
I won't make a statement this time. I'm trying not to ask a question. I don't think, I may be wrong, that there's been enough work done by the city or any cities on the real cost of giving public realm, which is what a road is, over to cars. The real cost of the cars and all these roads that we have, and the cost of storing the cars, which you just talked about, the on-street parking, causes all the problems with pedestrians and cyclists. And the actual cost of extending that road system into suburbia, which means that you have to use a car to get anywhere. So the real cost of the car and the agents of the car, the tyre factories, the petrol companies, the car factories are really the issue. And we've got a nation that doesn't produce tyres, doesn't produce cars. We're in the perfect situation to abandon that way of thinking compared to other countries that are dependent on that. So can we get more stamps, I guess is what I'm saying? Because some of the stuff you said tonight, I didn't know, and I'm in the trade. And I think it's really good, even just that one thing, to build another 10 car park buildings. Hundreds of millions of dollars locked up and of no benefit to most people after 6 o'clock.
And if you took that $32 million, I completely agree. About 25% of our CBD, I think this is right, about 25% of our CBD is taken up with roading, which is a huge amount of public space just for people to get from place to place in their cars. But if you took that $32 million from the car parking building, this is completely, would never happen, but out-of-the-box stuff, right? Took that $32 million and you bought $500 bikes for everyone, you would get, and I've got those stamps on my piece of paper somewhere. I can't remember how many bikes you get, but if everyone who got one of those bikes, about 17,000 or something, or 64,000 bikes. 64,000 bikes. And if everyone who got one of those bikes used it once a fortnight to get to work, you would save six and a half thousand car parks. There you go. But yeah, the public realm's really difficult and we do need to transition though because you think about, Christchurch is really different to other cities. And I know that a lot of people go, "No, no, all cities are the same and all the evidence is the same." But the one key thing that makes Christchurch different is that our CBD was locked up for four years. And people got used to not coming in. And people's perceptions are really important about what the CBD is like. And so the transition from being a, you know, a level city, if you like, with lots of gravel and no buildings, through to a city with lots of high-quality public realm and very few cars, has to have the step in between because people's perceptions are that they need, it needs to kind of be a little bit like it used to be first. Otherwise, we end up with a CBD where people go, "No, I've given up, you can't get your car in, so I'm going to keep going to the malls." And if you've got a ring, a doughnut city, it's really hard for public transport to work. You don't get the intensification, you keep sprawling. And so how we get that delicate balance of that transition where you do encourage people and make, as bad as it is, car parking a little bit easier to start with, to get people used to coming back in again, and then you transition, it's a really hard balance. But that high-quality public realm makes such a difference. All those shops that have been opening up in town and all the ones that are doing really well and all that kind of stuff, they've all opened up in places with no on-street car parking outside. And the narrative that you hear from anywhere else is that you need the on-street car parking. And yet, all of these thriving bits in our city, people park a couple hundred metres away and then they walk there because it's through high-quality public realm and it's a great thing to do. Just like a mall, right? You drive to the mall, you drive around the car park looking for one, you get out of your car, and then you walk 200 metres to the shop that you want to go to. No different.
Yeah, I'm not sure how many, I'm not sure how many questions I'm allowed to ask. But the first one is, and I'm not anti-cycleways because I wrote the active strategy in Tumru. My question is, how many, in the numbers given in the press, how many cyclists on those cycleways, the increase comes from people going off from other roads onto them as opposed to add new cyclists? That's a question I'll leave with you.
We have some stamps on it. We do have some stamps on it.
Yeah, well, I didn't read them in the press.
No, but they weren't there because it's from the last year.
This is where I, you know...
So last year...
Anyway, that's one question. I'll leave that with you. I don't want you answering it.
So can I recount? Okay, so it's a great question. Because we have an answer. And that answer is that there was a survey done, I think it was last year. Do you know, it was last year, the qualitative survey that was done maybe early last year that looked at, that stopped people who were on the cycleways and asked them a series of questions. And one of them was, if you weren't biking on this route, what would you have done to get to your destination? 15% would have been in a car. 40% would have been on another cycle route. And the rest, I think, would have gone just down that route anyway. But 15% were new to cycling and cycling that route because the cycleway was there.
Okay, you may have asked another question?
Sorry, Gary says yes.
I don't even want to hear the answer.
Is how much influence is the condition the central government put on the money they give to spend the money quickly? How much of an influence does that have on your decision, Mike?
I think it's actually a balancing act of everything. We've got to balance that with all our budget, you know, all the transport parts of our budget. Obviously, if we've got incentive from the central government and that we're going to get 65, 75% subsidies on a project, then there's going to be more of an incentive to get it done quicker. But then we've got to realise we can only physically do so much at a certain point of time as well. And I actually believe what we've been doing is less than what we're capable of doing. But at the end of the day, it would be fools not to actually take advantage of subsidies from central government. Because if we don't, other councils will, and we'll just end up missing out. It'll end up costing the ratepayers more in the long run.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm not sure if you can answer this question or not. However, I went to an eco-village meeting last night and the eco-village person who was talking said that in Auckland, it was very difficult to get an eco-village approved if you didn't have enough car parks. And so my question is, in Christchurch, when you approve of new buildings, do you have to have certain amount of car parks? Or can you say, "Yes, we'll approve it because you've got so many bicycle capabilities, etc.?"
The answer is it varies where you are. So within the CBD, there are now no requirements for onsite car parking. It's part of the accessible city part of the district plan that the last government put in. And so that's caused some distress for some people because it's intensification and no car parking. Many places are doing it anyway. The new government MPS is going to lower parking requirements or get rid of them altogether. In theory, the proposal is along all main transport routes or within 800 metres of a bus stop and a range of different lengths. It probably goes a bit far. But I think probably, it depends where you're planning on eco-village. And I think there are probably some people in the room who have planned similar things or tried to work on similar things. Dora's one. Come and talk to Dora. And we'll be able to tell you a bit more about the requirements there. I think talking with the council planners and stuff as well to see what sort of leeway you can get on those things is really important.
Hey, how's Sarah?
How's it going?
I'm probably skating on no ice here, certainly thin ice. I've just finished...
The ice is getting thinner as we speak.
I've just finished building a racing car with a tank motor and it uses five gallons to the mile, so...
You're not using it all day, are you?
Just have things come a little bit further from, just because it's a cycleway, I'm looking at it from the other point of view, that people seem to get the blinkers on. The uni one that you took, that's bloody fantastic. It's great. It seems to weave its way in and out. You don't even know it's there. But the likes of Sinasse Street, which was a fairly early one, in my view, something could have been changed differently because it's, in my view, it's a fiza.
It's a fiza.
It is a fiza?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. I use Sinasse Street, okay? So there's lots of good things about Sinasse Street, and as you saw, it was allowing these kids to bike to school, right? The problem with Sinasse Street is that it didn't stick to the original design guidelines, okay? So if the original design guidelines had been followed and the best-practiced cycleway had gone in, there would have been no car parking on the south side, okay? So you've got the cycleway, and then you would have had, it might have been a little bit wider so you could fit a couple more cyclists passing each other, which would have been quite nice, just saying. And then you would have had, you know, yellow dotted lines of no parking. That would have meant that when cars are turning into accessways, you'd have a clear view of cyclists coming. Because at the moment, sometimes you get a parked car with a cyclist coming and a car coming in, and you don't see them. As we've prepared some accidents, okay? You would have been able to have slightly wider driving lanes for the buses and the cars going down Sinasse Street.
Because that does worry me, having narrow the driving lanes, I suppose.
So it's the driving lanes, right? And then you would have been able to have a buffer between the passenger door opening up on the one-way street with the north parking. The reason that it's the current design is that everyone insisted on car parking on the south side because that was a compromise, because the businesses and other people submitting on that cycleway really wanted to retain car parking. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So I would think that as we go through over the next few years, not necessarily the next term, but as cycling numbers, because the thing is, Synesius Street has really good numbers on it already and the cycleway that leads to it isn't finished yet. Um, but we'll be able to maybe get rid of that.
Just, just one more.
Can I say that? Um, because I, I sort of agree, like, Synesius Street is what we've got and it could have been a, a lot better.
Because of what, is it because it's one of the first ones, is that why?
No, no, it's, it's purely because we compromised, council compromised, um, even before it went out for consultation and therefore compromised even further. And therefore, and it was all to do with car parking. And, and I find that most of the complaints we're getting from cycleways is actually where we've compromised, um, and increased car parking along there, which is just squeezing the actual road corridor to fit everything in.
Now, the only other question I'd like to ask, that, and, and I think it's good that, don't get me wrong, I, I think if, if a cycleway saves 10 people getting a heart attack and it's 10 years down the track, bloody great. But I, I'd like to think that if we've got the dough, we could pave them in gold, it doesn't matter. But right at the moment, I think we've got some things like, um, say take like one of Shagrock, which is seven odd million bucks for about 500 metres, that, that is a lot of cost for a little bit.
It's not a cycleway. It's not a cycleway.
But it's the next.
Well, it's, it's.
It's a coastal pathway.
Yeah, well, do bikes ride over it?
It's a shared path. It's not, it's not part of the major cycleway.
Yeah, but it's a lot of timber spent on a little bit, whereas you could get a lot more bang for your buck on going out to, towards Templeton, as far as how many kilometres you'd get for seven odd mil, in, in my view. It just needs to.
People want to ride to the beach, drive to the beach.
Yeah, um, Sarah knows a lot about the coastal pathway. But it, it's actually, and that's what we're trying to explain during the presentation. We, we put money into all parts of transport. And actually, when you look at the costs and kilometres of cycleways completed, it is actually less than what we're doing in the road, road in, um, aspect of, of council. The problem is, we're not consulting on every road in project we do, we just go ahead and do it. Um, and so it's not seen by so many people. If we had to consult on every single road that we did, um, then you know all about everything we're. Well, you know what we're doing, about everything we're doing. Um, but the problem is, like, way back when, we consulted on doing 256 million dollars worth of cycleways, or back then it was a lot less, but every time we do a new one, we've got to go reconsoal on the, on the route. So it gets dragged up again and again.
Axel, who hasn't got a.
Sorry, can I just, no, Axel, sorry, can I just answer the coastal pathway bit? But yeah, I get this quite a bit. And I don't often get to, to say this, but particularly publicly, because I bite my tongue a lot at council. Um, so the castle, the coastal pathway is a four metre wide shared path. The reason that it's so expensive going along the coastline there is because, you know, sections like Beachville Road and stuff, and I hear a lot of people saying, well, look across from the other side of the estuary and they've got this beautiful rock wall, right? The entire estuary empties and fills up against that rock wall twice a day. At low tide, the water's still metres deep, when it's hundreds of metres from south shore. Um, and that's why that bit has to be done that way and that's why it was prioritised. It's the road to the port. And so all of that rock buffering and rock revetment and all of that work that's done down, down there that's really expensive, that's the expensive bit.
It just seems a lot.
I know, but it's a port road, right? It's a port road, protects the port road. Um, the, the last bit around Monks Bay, um, is the, the last bit to be done. And it's probably the most technically challenging because it's out over estuary and have to be carefully get out. That replaces a footpath that was lost in the earthquake and can't be replaced due to life risk um, that connects the Monks Bay and Red Cross community to Sumner. It can't be on the other side of the road because the rocks fell down. You know, yeah, people lost their lives under those rocks. And, um, that's why we need a footpath on the other side of the road. It's just expensive to do it.
That would be in that, that, that will be quite expensive, wouldn't it?
It was, it's budgeted for, but it's a few years. It's budgeted for, but it's a few years out, yeah.
Okay, so here's my thought. I have, I have a question that comes out of this thought. So, uh, Saturday's press article is all we had to mention, um, and Charlotte grinned at us from the front page, which was lovely to see. The online version, the press couldn't help itself, they had to, uh, stick the word controversial in front of cycleway, um, in, in, in the headline. And so my, my, my thought is, the stuff, you know, the overarching, um, thing that the press is part of, they agreed half a year ago that, um, climate change is a thing that is not to be discussed any longer. Um, and I would have thought that cycling is a key part of addressing climate change. So the question is, should we, as politicians, elected members, not work? Not the royalty, you, uh, um, not work more closely with the media and just make the link between, okay, you've already made the decision on what climate change means, that it's not to be discussed any longer, why not go the next step and actually go out and, and, and the, the controversial bit of, of cycleways is gone? That's just the thing, that's what we have to do as society to actually save our own bacon. Thank you very much.
I do think, um, I think that the declaration that, that the science on climate change isn't up for debate anymore is one of the reasons that the media coverage has changed. Um, yes, they still say it's controversial and stuff, but they're not picking up on every little thing, um, that they used to. And, um, but I think we could help ourselves a bit more too. So the South Express consultation document that went out, it was, you know, all in one hit rather than let's do every single section and have controversy on every single section, um, which was really good. But with a big picture page, which was great, so we said, we can do a page, it's all the big picture, you know, why we're doing the cycleways, you know, healthy environment, little city, I didn't mention climate change.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, I saw it, but I didn't see it till this printed, um, and didn't mention climate change. And so we need to be selling that stuff as part of the cycleway story as well.
Oh, Chrissie.
Uh, thanks, Gary. Um, Chrissie here, um, just a few things I'd like to really thank Mike and, um, Sarah and Leanne and the other, and Pauline and at least another five councillors who've been supporting the, um, cycle lanes to get them through as a majority, um, cycleways. I'm going to be able to bike home sort of 80% on, on cycleways, so really appreciate them. I, I suppose the other thing I just wanted to do, and it will be a question, Gary.
Isn't it?
Isn't it, yes. Um, is that just remembering back to, uh, let's say 2001, when Gary was just mayor, I was just the councillor and we were trying to get cycle lanes on roads and there are still a lot of cycle lanes there. They're not best practices today, but in those days, that's all we could get. All we could get was intermittent bus lanes down Papunui Road and it was all around parking. So I'm fascinated to hear that's still your issue that we're compromising on. So, you know, since, and I linked, um, Sarah the books because way back in the 60s where people advocated for cycles and separated cycleways and cycle lanes. So just thank you for taking the journey and taking it further and giving us the great quality that we've got. So my question is, what do you think has changed that's allowed us to do these separated cycleways? When, what, what was it, Gary, 18 years ago? We could barely get cycle lanes on those and they were very, very low quality and very narrow and, and didn't give us much protection at all.
I don't know. I'm listening, I, this is, this is all very new to me, the cycleway stuff. So I didn't bike five years ago, I wasn't particularly, I mean, I'm kind of interested but concerned and wasn't following any of the, the politics or anything. Um, I got elected to do, you know, the environmental and climate changing kind of stuff in cycleways. It's a key part of it, so I fall into cycleway stuff. Um, but I, it's a really good question and I would like to know.
Yeah, I, I also think, um, but, but yeah, potentially now we're more connected across the globe than we've ever been. Um, so we're a bit, now to see actually what's happening in other cities around the world and how successful it has been there. Um, so it makes it a little bit easier to bring it into Christchurch and to, to get it started. And then you get, um, I, I think we've got a lot more international people now in Christchurch that are also bringing in that experience and advocating for it. Um, so I'm not too sure if that was there, uh, when you were on council, um, but we're, we're seeing it now. There's some great advocates as, as well that's helping push it along.
German, yeah, right, last question.
You know, that places like Amsterdam, Copenhagen and stuff, people go there because it's bike friendly, right? And people go to experience that, that's all we need in Christchurch, cycling tourism and stuff. John Mackenzie's a big favourite, he's been emailing everyone recently and putting on Facebook pages. And before I forget, Rose, before I forget, I've got about 30 of these, it's the, the latest update, it's cycle maps with all the different cycleways and apps and pieces on them. Um, so, so that's there, yeah.
I'm going to, um, ask, say to my friend over here that, have you ever driven out to, to, um, Sumner in the summer or on a good day? It is bumper to bumper traffic. The sooner we get that cycleway, secure cycleway finished, families will continue all the way to Sumner, which they're not doing now because it's a nightmare present. My question is, how many people did not, came here tonight by cycle? That's it, yeah. How many people came, uh, by bus? Cool? How many people walked? Yeah, so isn't that fantastic? Fantastic. Scooter? Yeah, there's an electric bike sort of show outside. If anybody wants to know about electric bikes, they're all on show outside.
Thank you, right.
And we're carpooling.
I'm, I'm sorry, we've, we've, we've reached time.
I, I think trends do change. Um, after the, uh, 2011 earthquakes, I was on the New Zealand Transport Agency and I talked to Jim Lundy, who was that Gazwegian that spoke, who, who's an urban designer. And I said to him, what would be the biggest way we could actually gain something? And he said, the infrastructure's stuffed under the ground. Instead of digging up all the streets, why don't you actually, um, widen the footpaths and put the new infrastructure underneath the ground? So I then thought, I put my accountant's hat on and said, why don't we sell our infrastructure to the super, superannuation fund for 40 years and buy it back gradually and have all new infrastructure? And that widened footpath is a cycleway. Now, I took that to the board of transit news, uh, of, um, New Zealand Transport Agency and it was approved at the board, the staff loved it, they went to Stephen Joyce and he said, no way. And that's what you actually have to keep battling with these things. I then got sacked by Stephen Joyce because I questioned them on, on, on the project, but that's neither here nor there. But that's, you've got to just, the question of Chrissie of what changes, you just have to keep battling away and battling away and battling away and eventually things change. And I just think tonight, we've had this wonderful talk and, and there's a whole lot of us here who are, who are really committed to this, but the only way we can get, we can get other people, um, supporting it is by us actually taking them on some of these routes. So like, for instance, when Pam and I go and visit our son who lives across town, we go down Columbo Street because the road's safe all the way. And, and that's the, the cycleway right through town is a really good way of, of getting there. We've all got to do that and we've all got to support the funding, proper funding and we've got to argue the numbers. We've got to argue the finances and that is all of our responsibility, not just these guys. We've got to get in behind them. It's a very lonely place when you're at the council and you're fighting for something that is not universally popular, you've actually got to be brave. So I'd like you to put your hands up. Next Tuesday night, um, post-election, um, we are going to have the chief's exit, no, we're not going to. Well, just a pings. We, we, and by the way, Leanne apologised, she's been called way too, um, family a bit. Um, uh, um, the next Tuesday night, we've got the chief executive of the insurance council coming. So he'll be here and I'm sure there'll be a lot of people interested in that. And the following week, we've got the new chief executive of the city council. So, so, um, yeah. So, um, thank you all for attending and if you're not on our Tuesday club notes, come and see me and I'll put you on them. Thank you.